Couple seconds here, we'll go ahead with it. I would like to call to order the June 4th, 2025, meeting of the Madison Planning Board. We have one alternate here this evening, and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Chairman.
I'll second it. Motion made and seconded to elevate Kia to a full member this evening. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
Made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. I think we do have, we do have one change, is that we're going to put the Coleman pit before adjournment, because you guys are gonna kick me out. So. Number five, oh, no, no, four is approval of the minutes.
Make the motion, Chairman.
I'll second it. Motion been made and seconded to approve the April minutes. All those in favor? May? Going too fast.
Mr. Chairman, we never voted on the agenda.
Oh, we, okay.
Sorry.
All those in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Then we're off to approval of the minutes. On page four, at the top, motion by Mark seconded by Littlefield to approve the scenic road cut on Pound Road. The motion was voted and passed by a vote of chip in 401. With price abstaining. That's the only thing I saw found. See, I read it this time. Any other additions, deletions?
Same edit to page two. Motion by Littlefield seconded by prices and approval. Should've been 401 with gag and abstaining.
Any other additions, deletions? Hearing none of votes, a motion.
I'll make the motion, Chairman. We'll second it.
And motion made and seconded approved the May meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public comment? How about you approve the public comment?
Does that both sets a minute?
Yeah, we need to approve the non-public.
Right. But you can't.
I can't do the non-public.
The last one must take a motion.
Okay, we have a set of minutes here for the non-public session that we had last time. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. It's back to you, sir.
Back to me. Okay. And number five is public comment. Any public comment? Hearing no.
I wanted to address you, Mark.
I respectfully request, I'm Henry Walther from 557 Plains Road. I brought Mr. Neil Underwood here this evening to discuss what's on the docket, which is under Old Business. Just was wondering, Neil here needs to get home at a reasonable hour.
I'm okay.
So I just wanted to see how quick that could be brought up, that's all.
And that is, okay, number seven. I do not anticipate the preliminary review will take that long.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
And I want to go home. Okay. So we'll stick with the agenda. Any other public comment? Hearing no public comment, I will close the public comment period. Number six is new business, which is case number 25-24. Preliminary review for Sean Bergeron, Bergeron Technical Services LLC, agent for High Acres Enterprise LLC for Pine Roads. Tax map 233 lot 581 for a five lot subdivision consisting of four small lots ranging in size from 2.1 acres to two and a half acres. And a fifth lot being the remaining portion of the parcel containing 42.3 acres. What do we know about this preliminary review? Okay. So notifying all that?
No, no, no.
We don't, we don't do that. Okay. And who is presenting tonight?
I will be presenting Kate Richardson, Sean Bergeron Technical Services.
Okay.
Do I need to speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, I don't think you have.
You can just sit there, I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'm Kate Richardson with Bergeron Technical Services, representing High Acres Enterprises LLC. Our client wishes to subdivide their property. The property is located on Forest Pines Road. There is a location map there for everyone on the sketches that were provided. We provided two sketches for you because the parent parcel is rather oddly shaped. And so we want to make sure that we can see everything that's going on, the full parcel, and then the area which we would like to subdivide off for house lots. The subdivision also proposes a access right-of-way in lieu of a road to access the back parent parcel once it is subdivided off. That parcel is planned to be purchased by Upper Saco Valley Land Trust and put into conservation.
The board have any questions? I have questions. How about, who did your wetlands delineation?
Greg Howard did the wetlands delineation of North Country Soil Services.
Okay. And so he would be on the final plan?
On the final plan, he will certify it. We also have on the parent parcel, not adjacent to the buildable lots, but near enough that we wanted to show it. There is a wooded wetland that was not delineated by Greg. It doesn't have any effect on the buildable lots, but we did have our surveyor, who is also a certified septic designer, permanent septic designer. Outline where that is located, and that is Laurel and Gerard, but did that work?
And do you plan to show the whole lot on the?
Yes, so, I mean, after this, I've pretty much worked on the full-size plan sets. The whole lot does not fit one sheet. So I did cut off the top and kind of place it over to the side. It will be on one sheet, but it's got a match line to it. And it will be shown at one inch equals 100 for the overall lot, and then there will be a second sheet showing the buildable lots with two-foot topography. And a little bit more detailed in one inch equals 50.
Will the buildable lot, it be lots or lot?
It'll be four separate lots.
Buildable.
Buildable.
Where you delineate on that, location of a well, location of septic, where it can be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, anticipates have been done, all came back favorable. That information will be submitted as well.
And our subdivision regulations require 200 feet of frontage on a road for each lot?
Yep, so on the sketch that you've received, the one that shows the lots more detailed, there is a table that identifies, this is a preliminary table. The lots probably will be a little bit different than what's configured here, just because we hadn't completely finished the topography when the sketch was submitted. But 200 feet each buildable lot has 200 feet of frontage on Forest Pines Road. And then they each meet the two-acre minimum with taking out areas of 33% or greater slope and the wetland areas.
And do you have steep slopes?
We do at the back, where the power lines are.
Yeah.
There's some pretty intense steep slopes, so all of that gets taken out of the calculation for the two-acre minimum.
And how about easement area, not counting as density?
We did not remove the easement. Are you talking about the power line easement? We did not remove that from the area.
It is our habit to not include easement area.
It's.
The regulation says right-of-way, so is there?
It's not a right-of-way, it's the, and I'm happy to bring in and furnish the easement that is recorded for this, for this property. It says easement, not right-of-way. The, because it is power lines, it does have a, you can't put structures on it.
Right.
But it's qualifying land for density under, you know, it can be used as density for a septic system, but a building could not be built where that easement exists.
In the easement area.
Because of the power lines.
You remember the Yule subdivision up here on the corner?
Yes, yep.
And, and they did not include their easement area, to my recall.
What is the requirement for road frontage? I understand it's being called a non-buildable lot, but at this point, it's not in conservation. So wouldn't we still require 200 feet of road frontage on the remainder lot?
Lot one.
Yeah. Wow. The 41.19 acres, what's gonna be left? I understand it's supposed to go into conservation, and that may negate the 200 feet of road frontage, but it's not there yet.
Our hope is that you, as the planning board, would be very gracious, the access right-of-way. We were hoping that with that cul-de-sac at the end, while we are not hoping to have to design or build a road to town standards, that is meant to be a placeholder in the event that it ever needed to be platted right-of-way, basically, not a built road. So there is 200 feet plus of frontage on that cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac. Gotcha.
And we would submit the proper waiver for that request.
Okay.
So you're gonna build a paper road?
Yes.
We really don't do that. And we haven't historically.
I think, well, if it doesn't go into conservation, then that road would have to be built. I think that would have to be stipulation.
The Upper Saco Valley Land Trust does have a purchase and sales, which can be submitted as part of the application.
But I'm also not privy to whether or not conservation, being in conservation exempts it from that road frontage.
That's an excellent question.
Would that essentially be a parking lot for the conservation easement? Essentially, yeah, and access to, so as part of this purchase of this parcel, the parcels across the street that are owned by Higher, excuse me, High Acres, will also be part of the purchase agreement, and so access to those parcels as well.
Okay, thank you. And then it shows that they're going, there are little like driveways off of it. Is that?
Yes, so.
Off of the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, so this crosses and goes over to like the Mac Pond area. And then the one going to the north is for EverSource, that's their driveway access along the power lines.
Okay, so those are those. Does lot one have 200 feet on Forest Pines?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so each of those lots do. On lot two, I noticed that that one slopes like immediately down. Is that a part of the 30-degree slope?
It slopes immediately down.
On lot two, if you're driving up Forest Pines, it goes straight down. I'm just wondering about the driveway access for those you'll show on your plan where the, where each driveway.
We don't generally show that on subdivision plans, because that's up to the road agent. And approval by the planning board, we don't want to confuse approvals with the road agent hasn't approved it. So we don't generally show driveways. The access, you know, would require the proper permitting for the driveway.
So to get access, is the back of the lot the buildable lot?
And?
Because you're showing wetlands in here?
Yes, for lot one, you'd have to go to the rear of the parcel to find buildable land that is outside of the setback.
So you have to go over the wetlands to get there?
You won't have to pass over the wetlands, you'll have to pass around them. They don't extend completely onto, to the other property line. And I apologize, I had the delineation done and on there, and it didn't come through, and I didn't notice it until after I submitted it. But it will be properly shown on the submitted plan.
Okay.
And where is the steep slope? Is it between three and two?
Yeah, the majority of the steep slope is gonna be on lot three. And it generally is in the area of the power line easement, a little bit comes in to the front of the property beyond the line of the easement, but the majority of it is within the power line easement area.
And it's not reflected in your tabulation of proposed lots?
It's not, because when we submitted this, we hadn't finished the topography in that area. Since then, that topography has been finished, and the calculations have been redone. Lot three needs to get a little bit bigger, because it did have the most significant amount of steep slopes on it. But the configuration will be similar. And all lots still comply with frontage and two-acre minimum of usable, non-wetlands, steep slope.
You seeing the square footage of that lot that's gonna change a little bit?
Yes, it'll get a little, it'll get larger. Three will get larger, two will get a little bit smaller.
Two will get smaller, okay, yeah. That's got the square footage to do it.
And what's the total frontage of the, of the parent lot?
That is an excellent question, but I don't have the answer off the top of my head. I would say it's probably around around 1,000 feet of total frontage.
Are you working with conservation?
So we actually were originally contracted by the Upper Saco Valley Land Trust, and they connected us with the owners. Because this, we are contracted with both, because Upper Saco Valley Land Trust needs to subdivide this land off in order for this parcel to be obtained by them. So they are actually our client as well as High Acre. So they're our joint clients on the project.
I guess the real question is, is there enough frontage there to squeeze 200 feet out of all five?
Yeah, I was trying to do the quick math on that.
Elevation might get tricky.
If there is, I don't think we have the area that, they'd be pretty funny shaped.
Yeah, I think. Yeah, it's that 100-foot frontage that.
What is it, 113, 12?
So your, your goal is to present that, and are you gonna, are you gonna? You're not gonna build a road?
No.
And are you gonna deed a 50-foot right-of-way?
The, are you talking about the existing 50-foot right-of-way?
Well, otherwise you don't have a road, and that's.
The, are you talking about the parcel that's the access way?
Yeah.
That would be deeded to Upper Saco Valley Land Trust.
Yeah, but it still only has 100 and, still don't have 200 feet on a class.
Right, it would be a right-of-way, not a, not a parcel. A private road, essentially.
It's still a lot.
Yeah, we've created a lot without a lot frontage.
Any private road is technically a lot without frontage.
Private road would have to be accepted though, right? By the board? We don't just allow a private.
Because a private road can't be owned by the town, it has to be deeded to someone. It's usually an owners association. In this event, it would be Upper Saco Valley Land Trust.
But we don't actually know that. We hope that.
Right. But we can't, Upper Saco Valley Land Trust by law cannot purchase a parcel that doesn't exist. So they can't purchase the parcel until it is subdivided off by law.
But you have a purchase and sales agreement with them for that parcel?
Upper Saco Valley Land Trust does have a purchase and sales agreement with High Acres.
High Acres, that's what I meant, yes.
After this subdivision goes through to purchase the remainder lot. But they can't purchase a lot that doesn't exist.
When will that lot exist?
After approval and recording of the plan at the registry.
So. So you're saying this 100-foot access is a lot by itself?
Yeah, any private road is technically a lot by itself. It has its own footprint. But it's not owned by the town or by the state. So it's, you know, it has frontage along a town road or a state road. But it's its own separate lot of record. It gets, usually they get a tax map number and a lot number assigned to them.
And so the road frontage for that lot is?
It would be the length of the arc on the, on the cul-de-sac, which is in excess of 200 feet.
And how big is it?
How big is the?
Lot five.
It's 41, 41.19 acres by the sketch. It might change a little bit with.
40, yeah, but I'm confused, and you're representing this road as a lot, creating a 232-foot radius. But the remainder lot is 41.19. So does this road access create a lot?
It creates a right-of-way parcel that is privately owned. It can't be developed, because it's not a buildable lot. You know, similar to any, any road that gets created as part of a subdivision. That's its own separate parcel. The town doesn't own it, the state doesn't own it. Usually, because they're usually built to provide access to multiple lots, it usually gets taken over. It's either retained in ownership by the developer until such time as the owners association can take it over. In this case, there is no owners association. Lot four would not have access to their lot over that right-of-way. It would only be for the remainder lot, number five.
So is this lot five, and the back lot, lot six?
We didn't assign the right-of-way a lot number as a lot. We certainly could call it lot number five, you know?
I think that's what the confusion of is, it's not a lot number. Maybe it should be, and then the back one would be number six.
Yeah, but you can't create a lot with no frontage.
That's true, you don't have it down here.
Yeah.
Would the town also have access to the?
It would be, so the land is going into conservation, so anybody could use, there's an existing woods road that runs the length of that right now. Anybody could drive over it. It would just be retained in ownership by Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. But lot number four, their driveway could not come off of that right-of-way. It would have to come off of Forest Pines Road.
Okay, I was just wondering if it's for the higher good, like they're putting 600 acres into conservation, right, roughly? And this is the way to get to it? So is it a benefit to?
Yeah, but that, that's not what we do.
I don't, I don't know if there's like a variance or something that.
There could be a variance, but.
Or just trying to problem solve. I, I've gone down that a bunch of times, and it's beautiful out there, and I just don't want to be like a stickler on how do we get back there, because we want people to be able to get back there, right? I know, I know. And protect the land and do what's right. I, I'm just wondering if there's some way.
What we're asking is, so we're asking to create a private road without actually having to design and install the road. That's what we're asking you guys, to give us a waiver for the design and installation of the road on the private road right-of-way.
And so who will own it?
Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. But it's private, so it's not owned by the town, just like any other private road in the town of Madison. It would not be owned by the town. It would not be maintained by the town. It would not, you know, have to be kept by the town. It would be Upper Saco Valley Land Trust that would own it. And maintain it and.
But then on the back of it, you're asking for, you're saying there'd be more than 200 feet of frontage to the big lot?
Yes.
So.
So for a second, pretend that we've designed a road. That would be your frontage.
Right.
But we're asking you, can we just not have to design it, since it's going to conservation land, and there's never gonna be a driveway off there accessing any houses?
If, this is the question I have, if that. If, the, just the question I have, if that's supposed to be access. The two hundred foot access, two hundred and foot, two hundred foot to access that back lot. And it's, it's, it's taking place of the. Space on Forest Pines. So you're just like moving that up. So that would have to be a road, Mr. Chairman. To have that be the, the frontage on Forest Pines for this lot, wouldn't it?
I think you have to have it one way or the other way. Yeah. The way I see it.
So would that reduce this by one lot potentially? Reduce the subdivision by one lot so that they have enough frontage to get back there?
That's what they don't wanna do.
Yeah.
I know, I'm just wondering. Would Upper Saco Valley put the road in?
That would be a question that I would have to discuss with my client.
Okay.
They specifically requested not to.
Not to discuss it?
Not, not to have to do it.
Not to have to put it, I see, okay, so.
And I don't, I don't know that Upper Saco Valley Land Trust has access to funds or grants that would. Provide the amount of money it would take to build that road.
Okay. Do we have a waiver currently for private roads? To say that, you know, we're, we're not taking on the liability of this private road, do we have that? Think the state says we can do it, but I just.
Well, the town never really takes on that liability. But.
I mean, I think we're getting too deep into it for a preliminary review, that's our concern, and if they wish to submit a waiver for the road frontage issue, then that's their prerogative.
Or a variance.
Yeah.
Or a variance, yeah.
I think that's. Get a little bit, sort of appeals for variance before they come back here.
Twelve feet, twelve feet short of the thousand feet.
Well, the, on that particular lot, they're, what did we figure, eighty-eight feet short on the road frontage?
Yeah, just being overall.
But yeah, I think, I mean, the ZBA may be inclined to issue a variance, given what the land is for. But I still think it needs to happen.
Yeah, you can't, you can't create both five and six. And, and the parent lot needs two hundred feet. Or a variance.
Or a variance. Consider it's going into conservation. They could come in and ask for variance as part of their next. Presentation, correct?
That would be my suggestion.
I, that, yeah, I mean, that's kind of the way I look toward it, but.
Any other issues we're looking at?
I think that's the only one.
Frontage.
Frontage?
Yeah.
It's kinda sticky because it's frontage on a lot that's gonna be. Never going to be developed.
Yeah.
If it's never developed, you need the frontage.
Yeah, even if, you know, even if it was just a forty acre lot back there and somebody wanted to keep it to build a house.
Then they would have to go through a different process, process we're talking about.
Oh, yeah, our regulations don't anticipate that.
So, wouldn't it be to keep it simple, you just make this here part of the back lot?
Yeah, but it still needs two hundred feet.
Cuz that back lot doesn't have frontage anywhere else.
Does it need front of, frontage, it's gonna be conservation?
If it's a lot.
If it's a lot. But again, a variance may solve that.
Right.
And seeing it's gonna go to conservation anyway. I would, I don't know, I mean, we're not really approving anything tonight anyway, we're not voting on this for approving it tonight, right?
Right.
This is just a preliminary, but a suggestion for the next time, come in. Be prepared to ask for a variance on that frontage in that one lot.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, um, Sean Burris, Ron Burris, Ron Tactical. So. Is this truly a variance, or is it, is there a variance from zoning or a waiver from site plan and subdivision?
That'd be, that's a good question, it's not, wouldn't be site plan, it would be subdivision. And, um, and we just historically have never created a lot without two hundred feet on.
Right, but first question. Is it a zoning item or is it a planning item?
It exists in both regulations.
When you say it, the frontage requirement exists in both? So even if this board were to be willing to grant a waiver to that requirement, we would still need a variance from the zoning board?
I believe so, I mean, I would check with council.
There's two separate regulations, you'd have to, you would have, have that. So, one of the conundrums that we are faced with here, and we collectively, so High Acres, Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. The town of Madison, everybody involved in this thing, is the calendar. And the closing is quite, the closing by purchase and sale is quite some time off, it's like in November.
I believe that, yeah.
But the conundrum, you know, that sounds like it's a long time away. But unfortunately, the way that the regulatory agencies and the funding agencies that are involved in this. They have to have, it's the three month review process, I think? After this board's approval of the subdivision. So, we're faced with a calendar situation. So I'm curious, and I don't think that any point that you, gentlemen, and, and Tia, that you have raised. None of these points are, are inappropriate. But what I'm wondering is, we will address everything that we can. But can we come in with our final application for next month's meeting? There would be a waiver, maybe a waiver request or a couple waiver requests. And then ask for, if all looks well, ask for a conditional approval. And that would condition, like, one of the conditions for final approval might be getting that ZBA variance. Because we can't get to the ZBA in time to get back to you guys in time.
That would be a condition of approval.
It would be a condition of approval, Paul, yes, yeah.
And if the ZBA says too bad?
Then we don't have it approved.
We don't have it.
It's not uncommon.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
I, I, it sounds like it would work for me, but.
Yeah.
In a town north of here, Kate and I walk out of said meetings with lists of conditions.
What town would that be? I moved from there, okay? I'm from, I'm one of those. So be careful what you say.
I mean, it's not uncommon to have a list of conditions.
Right. Because we're just trying to make the process keep rolling.
Right, sure, and that would be one way of doing it.
I have a question, um, so it's definitely going into conservation, it wouldn't go into logging or excavation?
There ain't no trees left on there.
I know, but excavation or.
I can, for instance, excavation, no. But I think part of that conservation easement, that even the town of Madison is working on with Upper Saco Valley Land Trust. Logging is not an unusual, um, land use, so to speak, on a conservation property. But logging under a forestry management program, not going in and zips during it. When that property was logged, cuz it was logged about the same time that I bought my adjacent lot, so probably twenty-five years ago. It was what they called back then a liquidation cut. They went in and hit that so hard essentially to get all the money that they paid for the property and then some off of it.
Okay.
Okay, that wouldn't occur under the easements.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing we say today will be held against us, um, so. Um, I just, I'm an alternate on the ZBA and we have one of our five tests. What's the hardship? The hardship is he doesn't want, that he wants four lots and not three.
The alternative would be, we would request a waiver to not have to design or build the road, but have that considered a paper road.
Say, and you can go on the plans and know I'm building a lot.
Right, we can actually restrict it as, you can either put it as a condition or we can put it on the plan. Neither of these parcels can be built upon as part of the condition of this approval.
We don't, we don't subdivide unbuildable lots. Our regulations do not allow us to.
Will the entire six hundred acres be merged into one lot?
Ah, we talked about that last night.
Oh.
So I don't know.
Oh, okay.
And we're, the, our, we, the Conservation Commission wants to make that happen, but.
Okay.
We don't know that.
I'm just wondering if, like you say, we don't subdivide nonbuildable lots, if this is combined into that and it's forever in conservation.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to worry about this section being built on in the future.
And I'm, and I'm not worried about that, I'm worried about it as a regulatory issue. It's setting a precedent, precedent as a regulatory issue.
I feel like the town is trying so hard to make this chain of ponds easement happen.
Been on the Conservation Commission since the eighties, so.
Yeah, so you've been working for a really long time to make it happen, and it seems like they would also like to get their four lots. That they can make money off of and sell as buildable and all of that.
Well, okay, any other, any public input? Any more board input? You have any other questions of the board?
I don't, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Clear feeling of our concerns?
I do.
So, we're run by councils as well.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
So, maybe we can do that earlier. So. So you get, can get an answer.
Absolutely.
So you don't have to cook one point and just.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tia, thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. And old business, case number twenty-three oh three, preliminary site plan review for Hank Walther, applicant, and Neil Underwood, owner. For a property located at thirteen eighty-one Village Road, Silver Lake Tax Map, one eighteen Lot zero three two. To open Silver Lake Railroad in May of twenty twenty-three. Using rental pedal powered track vehicles called rail bikes. And as you remember, that our deadline on this ran out in May, and so we extended. The, um, the application, waiting for permission from the state.
I'd like to have Neil Underwood speak in my behalf, we're getting him.
Okay, good, good.
Hi, guys.
Hey, there.
Am I up?
You're up.
I'm up, okay. My name's Neil Underwood, and, um, I own the station down the street. Have any of you ever ridden on the train when we had them?
Yep.
What we're trying to do is bring that station back to life. It's, and I, I've gotta speak in defense of Hank, Hank's kind of a railroad guy that came to me with this idea. These, uh. DOT, uh, rail. Has not done well by Hank or myself. As far as, yes, we're gonna do an RFP and you'll be able to get this and you'll be able to get that. That's gone on for three years. In two thousand and three, I met with, um, Craig. And, uh, what's Craig's last name?
Rennie? Rennie?
Craig Rennie, yes, ma'am, thank you. And, uh, um, Mike Twigs, who are both in trails. We met in two thousand and three in the late summer. And they assured me that they had talked to rails. This is after going through three years of rails. And that we would be running in two thousand and four. Last year.
You mean twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four, sorry. I don't function well as the day goes on, so bear with me. And that didn't happen. And it's, it's just been a whole bunch of miscommunications going down the line. I'm sure Craig Reaney would, uh, uh. Call you up and tell you the same thing, they told him, no problem. Now, we've got it, I wrote a letter, they, they told me in, uh, twenty twenty-four. That they were closing the line. They were closing the snowmobile, mobile trail. And I wrote back to them and said, close my portion too. And what wound up with that is they wound up. Taking the whole thing from DOT, uh, rail and slid it right over to DOT Trail. So now DOT Trail has control of this twenty-one mile stretch. My only deal is here is, I would like to see this thing get back to being fun for people. Something like we had before. We lost it in, uh, two thousand and eighteen, we ran for eleven years. And people either died or they left. And it was just too hard for me at that point to try and get these people back again. They were all volunteers, everybody was a volunteer. And there was, I, I can assure you that there was zero money made in this, in this whole operation, it was to have fun. What, I guess what I'm after is we're, now it's tied up in trails. And I would like the board to consider that, once you guys get yes from, from DOT, um, trails. Once you get, here they, here they go, that we can go. To come back again, we're not gonna be able to even run half the summer at this point, we're trying to find out if this is gonna work. And it's little, it, it's little pedal cars up and down the track. It's not motorized cars or anything like that. And, you know, I, I can give you the whole scenario, but I'd rather not give you the entire scenario of what's going on, uh, with the state. It's not the same state that I worked with twenty years ago. It's a complete different ballgame.
We used to own those trails, those rails.
I know you did, I know what you sold them for. And I know I would have hocked myself to buy those. I know, I, I know what you sold them for, and why you sold them.
Yeah, just get rid of them.
And. That's true, I, I, I got you, but you had a thing going on with the, with the guy across the street from us. And, I, I know. I've been around for a while. I don't surface much, but I've been around for a while.
And are they ever gonna tear the rails out?
I don't want them to tear, tear these rails.
Yeah.
These rails are part of history.
Yeah.
The, uh, they're trying to tear out some, there's so many entities into this thing now. You wouldn't believe it, I mean, there's horse. You wouldn't believe it. I mean, there's horse people, there's, I, it's Cotton Valley down there. They're kind of upset with what's going on down there. They've worked on that line for, for years and uh, what's happened is some guy has come in a couple of years back and he's got three, two operations over on the west coast. And he's been chumming around to do something in Osapi, like it's, you know, I, I talked to you individually, but I know I'm on some sort of recorder and it's, it's a mess. It's, it's a mess. It's just been a mess. It's been a mess right along. And I, I think when Hank came in, you know, he was, wanted to do the, do the thing, but it has to go through me. They want me on the, on the uh, on the deal because I have seven hundred and seventy feet deeded. It's all deeded, track, the whole shoot match. So it, I walk them, they have something I want, I have something they want, I have a couple of things that uh, that has to go my way. And it's, it's very reasonable. I want the trail to come through. I want the rails to come through. The rails have come through for over twenty years since I've owned this property. They haven't paid a dime. I want it to happen, but I don't wanna be pushed and I don't wanna be lied to and I don't want, you know. Boom, right there. It stops. I mean, you guys are all sitting here taking care of the town. Nobody's paying you for this stuff. The guys at the state are all getting paid. We're paying the guys at the state. I mean, they've gotta be responsible to, to not let this nonsense go on.
Well, I can remember looking out the window in high school and seeing the train go up through the athletic fields.
Oh, yeah.
Suppose if I wasn't looking out the window, I would have been further than I am now.
No, you wouldn't. No, you wouldn't. You're right where you wanna be, man. That's a uh.
My question, Mr. Chairman, is what are, what are we looking to do here tonight with this?
Um, anyways, I guess what we're willing, one, what he would request is that we give him an open-ended, open-ended ended um, site plan review to run rail trail in the event he ever can get the state to jump.
Yeah, that's, that's basically it. Uh, Hank's gonna put his things together. They're gonna go on the track. They're gonna sit out there and they can look at them. It's uh, uh, I don't wanna push them, but it, there's a point. I'll do fair to a point, but I am not gonna get.
It sounds like you got a business deal to get squared away before we do anything.
We do?
No, you do.
I do with who? Myself? With state?
With state.
There's nothing we can do at this point, I don't think.
No, there isn't, other than the fact that once we're set with the state. Here we go.
Right, that's what the intent was way back a couple of years ago. To get, that's what the intent was a couple of years ago, right?
That was basically it. I mean, we were supposed to be running in twenty twenty-four, uh, according to uh,
So, so what you're asking for at this point in time is an open-ended extension?
Basically, yes. It's to have to come back and what, what we'd like to do is be able to get to them saying, here, here we go. I've already had a meeting with them and it, 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 it just, it mushes along now. We're in another, another realm. And I, I think we're gonna lose this opportunity. I think it, we're gonna run up to forty people, which is the same that we did in our cars. So it takes the traffic, it takes the, you know, there, there's no, it's not gonna be a giant operation. And what we're trying to do is run this thing at fifteen to twenty to twenty-five to thirty percent less. We're trying to figure out what, what to get. The state, there, there's two operations in the state. They get fifty bucks a seat. Fifty dollars a seat to do this. And we're trying, I, I'm trying to get this down at least a third under that. I can't say it's totally possible, but that's what I'm trying to do.
I have a question. Um, okay, so the DNCR has taken it over and now they're in charge. There will be a rail trail rec path running from Osapi Route twenty-eight to Conway.
Uh, twenty-eight to Conway.
Yep. No, to, that's the bill, but the DNCR has taken over complete control of the twenty-one miles to Conway. It stops at your section.
Yes, for seven hundred and seventy feet.
So would it continue through your section?
Yes, I want it to continue through. And they threw, they, they, this, this whole deal was gonna be snowmobiles for rail, for little pedal cars. That's what the deal was gonna be.
Rail with trail.
Rail with trail through your section.
Yeah, but the trail came after the fact. The trail just came uh, six weeks ago. Now we want to run the trail through. This was snowmobiles. Our, our original, we were gonna run snowmobiles through, let them come through like perpetually and we get to use the track.
So how much more of the DNCR track do you want to use?
Boulder Road.
We've done the Boulder Road.
Boulder Road?
Yeah, which is what we, what we had, had before.
And, and we won't have exclusive use. It's, it's a public trail. People can walk their dogs and ride their mountain bikes, but the rail needs to stay for the rail bikes. Think of Wolfboro, similar to that. If they do, if the rail trails committee wants to invest in stone dust and adding a walking path alongside the rail or in the rail like Wolfboro, that's their expense and their thing. We just wanna run the bikes the way it is right now. We don't have to spend money on it. We just cut the brush, keep it clean and safe. And leave it natural, the natural beauty, the way it sits. And the customers, they simply pedal up the three miles. We turn the bikes around for them and they come back.
But if they wanted, if they, if they wanted the uh, rail tra- I, I propose that they run the rail trail down next to the rail. They wanted to run the rail, just anybody come on the property and use it as a trail.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm saying? They want to use the whole problem, then you go down uh, uh, by the station and by the warehouse and everything else. Well, that's, that becomes an insurance issue for me. Who's, who's there? Who's there? Is it somebody going to the post office? Or is it somebody that's on the trail? Who, who carries the liability on that? They carry the liability on the rail itself. On, on the, on the rail and the snow and for the snowmobiles, that stretch.
Yep, they have about a hundred feet, right?
It's actually, they don't have anything there. They had nothing.
Nothing on your property. I'm talking about.
State has nothing to do with my piece of property.
Right. Okay, so my next question would be about the snowmobiles. Is it in exchange for the track going up to Boulder Road?
That's what it was. That's what the original deal was. And then, like I said, I don't know, I, I gotta go, six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, Mike calls up and said, well, people will be coming through on the trail. I said, what trail? So it, there's, there's more here that I, I'm not gonna put it on this because it's just, it's, it's crazy. It's like you're getting pushed, pushed, pushed. And I'm not, eh, you know, I'm okay. I've got, I've got enough money, so I don't. Money's not pushing me. What's pushing me is to be able to put something in there to bring that back to life. To bring that station back to life. And I mean, if you hadn't experienced it, you don't know what it's like. If you never rode on it and you didn't experience it and you didn't experience the Halloween stuff that we did and everything else. It, it was, it was great. It really was. It was awesome.
Mr. Chairman, I think at this point we're beyond our scope.
Can I say something? What we're asking for is simply this. I wanna run a business on Neil's property. I want permission from the town to be able to do that. This has nothing to do with the state. I just want the okay from you people to be able to run the business on his property. He has seven hundred and seventy feet. The entire business would be on his private property. Tour, okay, would be rental bikes going up the DNCR's public rail trail. And the conditional approval from the town would be that we comply with DNCR's stipulations about letting our customers pedal up the trail.
Right, to the, to the state. I guess that's simple. Can you do that? Can you go to seven hundred and seventy feet and say you're later?
We can't lease it anymore. When it was signed to the DOT and it was private, it would have been a lease situation. That's what I came in with two years ago. Since this big change happened, now it's DCNR and it is a public right, just like your street. So as a, as a vendor that gives tours, I'm responsible to carry the appropriate insurance and have the appropriate certified guide. That's it. I, I actually, there is another, there is a, there is another business, not in your town, in uh, in Wakefield called E-Bike Expeditions. He gives guided e-bike tours on Wolfboro, on the Cotton Valley Rail Trail. And I asked him, well, how do you, how do you do that legitimately?
With bicycles.
Yeah, the only difference is they're still using the trail. Their bike tires are on the ground, mine are on the rails. I need the rails, he doesn't. If that's, I don't, legally, I don't know what that means or, it, it's such a unique situation. There is nothing in writing that explains the difference. But other than that, let's put that aside for a second. Um, the requirements from the state were that he conduct his business on private property. So he got a, an agreement of lease with the Miss Wakefield diner. And, and he pulls in with a van full of bikes and his customers pull in and park their cars at the Wakefield diner. They get out, have their safety brief, briefing, they mount their bikes. It's all done on Wakefield, Miss Wakefield diner's private property because it looks, and then the tour guide leads them down the Cotton Valley Rail Trail and gives, gives them a scenic ride. And the only difference is, see, Neil's situation's beautiful because his property is permanently right there at the beginning of our tour. And the rail goes all the way, so it, it's perfect. Where, where E-Bikes Expeditions, they don't have any infrastructure at the diner and the diner won't let them like set up a building and put their bikes in it. So they have to come in in a van and a trailer and unload everything and get everything ready. Then they do the ride and they come back and they all go back to wherever their headquarters. But it's all legit and I talked to the owner just the other day about it and that's the way it works. We, but we wanna make sure that uh, Chris and Mike at DCNR, you know, will be on board with, with that type of situation. You know, we don't wanna go, you know, we don't wanna go break any laws or any rules or go against anybody. But it, it is a whole new situation since this ownership management got changed over, so.
To be blunt, I'm not certain what the heck we're doing here. We already approved this once. Why, why are we kicking stones that we've kicked three years ago? We liked the idea. Why, why are we making them go through another hour's spiel? We already approved it. Let's just approve it again and let him run it. I don't, what are we doing?
I'm, I'm with you on that. I think we've, we've all been in approval of this and it's the same thing and it just seems like uh, you know, may, maybe this'll give somebody a kick in the rear end to, to get, you know, some action.
That would be great. That would be great.
Nobody has, I, I still, I can't find.
Just within the station, that's all we need. We don't need anything with the state out back.
I can't find in here why we went with this two-year.
Was that a condition before? That they had to get state of rule?
Yeah, I mean in.
I take the two-year out if that's possible.
I don't know why, I can't find any reason in here why we did it.
I think that the idea was, you gave.
Right, just to give time, but we were going to approve it anyway. Why put a timestamp on it? Right, but a conditional approval with no timestamp, as long as the state approves it, should have been fine back then. I can't. I was here, but I don't.
We can't get out on the state unless they say go ahead. It's, I mean, I won't do that. There, there's, there, there's possible waves around it, but I'm not gonna do it.
I have a question about snowmobiling. So scrub oak scramblers, one of their main routes is up the rails?
It's up the rails. It's north-south. That's the only way they've got. They've tried, the DOT, DOT rail tried to find a different way. They can't find it. That's it.
So something that we look at is public use of easements for snowmobiling and paths and trails and things like that. So I'm just curious, would they still be able to?
That's basically.
If you're using, sorry, it does if you're using an easement. To, to extend, to say you can't drive your snowmobiles, your club cannot access north because you cannot pass my private property to continue onto the trails that the DOT wouldn't give you.
Couldn't do it.
Is what I'm.
Yeah, they, they couldn't do it the way it's held now. They couldn't come through.
It's a snowmobile trail.
No, they can't.
On their website, it says that it has winter use as a snowmobile trail.
I let them use it. I've let them use it for twenty years without, without.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So if you don't get the extension of the trails, then the snowmobile club cannot use, cannot go north.
No, they can't go north, they can't go south.
Okay.
That's what they want from me and what I want.
The snowmobile club.
It, it, it's, it's the whole thing. It's everybody's involved in the thing. There's so many people involved in this thing, you wouldn't know it.
That's why I'm clarifying.
Nothing to do with us. And nothing to do with this. That's, that's DNCR and that's a rail trail issue. All he's asking to do is for permission to run the, the bikes on his.
On his own personal property. That's it. Nothing to do with the trail.
The trail, that's.
Between him and the state. We just said we wanna see the approval from the state to use that. I think that, what we said in that original approval.
Obviously, we want that snowmobile trail to stay open, but that's his prerogative and it's, it doesn't come here. That's.
I do too.
Asking. Just clarifying.
I do too, and I'd like to see a trail going up through there. I really would. There's no, no question about it.
I would move this forward.
Can we make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve it indefinitely, so long as he gets state approval.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
A motion been made and seconded to uh, allow Mr. Underwood to continue a rental pedal-powered track vehicle called Rail Pa- Bikes on his property at the Silver Lake Post Office. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll abstain if that's okay from voting, because I'm on for it and we're a part of the DNCR talks to progress the rail trail, so.
Are you in favor of removing the rail yet?
Um, I'm in favor of whatever the DNCR decides to do in the upcoming meetings and that will be held with each town and public. So whatever's in the best interest of the.
Till next year. That also goes up till next year before that, that, that's all done.
Right, so it will at least be here.
Removal, we're on the same page. We wanna use the car to, for recreational activity.
Yep, I'm just abstaining because I'm on their board as well and I don't think that it's fair for me to vote.
And, and, and appreciate, I don't know if, if any of you guys are going, are going to be on this board or, or part of it. I'm not sure. Anybody? No?
The selectmen are.
The selectmen are? Okay.
No.
Motion for law.
Uh, motion been made and seconded. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those abstaining? That's good. Now that's.
Thank you.
Four oh one.
Thank you. I'm sorry to take up so much time, but.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And lady.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
We have next.
Thanks, Azad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the Pomeroy Trails case, which was the law merger that we disapproved, that went to the land court and got remanded to us. We're supposed to be here today and the Pomeroy Trust hired a new attorney.
They, they're asking for a continuous to the August meeting because they're looking for a new attorney. So they want, so the board needs to vote to continue their case to August.
But we have to vote?
Yeah, we can motion.
Okay.
And what happens if we don't continue?
That's what I was gonna ask.
They want time to obtain the counsel.
Judge is gonna slap your hand.
No, the judge said we did okay. We just missed one word or something or other.
Yes, three words.
Literally.
There was nothing, nothing the court didn't find and that we did anything unfaithful or anything like that, so.
I went to that hearing.
I know you did, cause I was gonna go and you didn't.
This looks like a year ago now, wasn't it, the hearing?
Yeah, it just keep, yeah, yeah, for all this time.
We have to extend it and then rehear it again.
Yes. So August sixth is the, so if you make the motion, it has to be date, certain time, place, the whole yadda.
I would entertain a motion to rehear the Pomeroy Trails case August sixth, twenty twenty-five at Madison Town Hall Meeting Room.
At seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of postponing this hearing until August sixth, well by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And I won't be here.
I know you won't. I have you in my book. I know. I keep track of all of you.
I can't keep track of myself, Kate.
Okay.
Yeah, what am I doing wrong, Kate?
What?
We amended the meeting agenda to do the Coleman.
At the end.
At the end, so you can kick me out. So the next on the agenda is Master Plan Steering Committee update from Tia.
Alright, yes. So we had a good meeting. Thank you for being a part of it. Yeah, so the update really is to ask for approval to you know, act on our outreach plan. And you have those documents. Basically, we want to be able to give out a survey and post it on our website and have the communication.
Is there an addition on that? I'm posting the survey on the website, is that, I can.
You're posting a link on the planning board website for us. That connects people to the survey for the vision section only. The first section of the master plan to gather feedback.
And you're gonna give me that link?
Yes. Yep. And also to potentially put it out on Facebook to the different Facebook groups that we have in town to gather support and get people interested and let them know that we have it. Hopefully, they'll click on it and take it. And then also to have a survey available at the town hall, a survey available at the library and folks who need help answering questions online can get help from the librarians or fill out a paper survey. And you also have the questions that will be asked in the questionnaire. You have the vision prompt for the boards that would, we would also like to send out and you have the, the section prompt. And those will go to the board too, different boards and groups.
And then we decided to create a Google Docs presence for this stuff to come to.
Yes, so we need to figure out where it will live on the town server, as Mr. Brooks said. And also see if we are allowed to make our own Facebook page to be able to send it out, so people know that it's not just coming from me, it's coming from the steering committee.
Doing our best to gather dat, get, gather data without gathering any one of any problems.
Yes. Do you have any questions on the prompts or the questionnaire or the outreach plan?
No, you're getting input. You get people to show up to meetings, so.
Yep, yeah, great input. Cheryl, actually Cheryl had some great feedback for us. Pretty awesome, so.
So, you need from us this evening, the blessing on that part of the master plan visioning data collection.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion then that we approve the things that Tia has brought up, so we can move forward with this on getting it posted and getting some survey information gathered.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you.
And thanking Tia for all the great work, her whole committee, but I know you've been putting a lot of effort into this and thank you.
So a motion been made and seconded to give Tia the go-ahead on this next section of the master plan rewrite. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. I have, have a hard time just keeping up with what you do, so.
You're doing great. We've got this. We're fine, remove it.
On the agenda is a couple potential, an alternate and a member of the planning board, which we need. Joseph Vienna?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And Donna Hempel.
Good evening.
So you went through this meeting, what do you think?
Very interesting.
This is pretty much it. The, the, the first case was interesting. But, it's kinda what you do, you sort of hear cases. Try to apply our regulations as fairly as possible and make reasoned decisions, so. Do you have any questions of us?
I, I really don't have any. I have to admit, much to my, I guess embarrassment, that this is my first time coming to this particular meeting, so it's it's, it's, it really is interesting. I can certainly see the challenges that you do have. And the, I guess, the intelligence that the knowledge that you have to have, the technical knowledge and knowing all the ins and outs. And being able to make, you know, make decisions. So it's and I, I think that's one of the things that did attract me to this was that I was, I was telling Dawn, we happen to be neighbors, by the way. That, that was coincidental, but.
You could ride together.
Yeah, yeah. But it was maybe thirty, forty years ago, I served as a selectman for the town. And also served at the fire, uh, fire department as an EMT. But forty years ago, I was much younger, starting a family and you know, trying to get a career and get all this stuff going, kinda gotten away. Now I'm retired and have that opportunity to, to serve again, so I I kept reading about position being open and thought that, well, maybe I should do this. So I discussed it with my wife. She gave me permission. And as I say, I can now, I can devote the time. I could make it to court cases if you needed to, as I know you just recently did. And it's I, I think it's important that, that we are able to plan, that we are able to, as best we can, look into the future and try to project those needs and see what's going on in people's minds and, and you know, and what is important, so. That's kind of my motivation, so.
Cool.
I'm not gonna have a spiel like that. I've been looking to get involved in the town. I've been looking for something that I think would fit my personality. I'm, my training is as a scientist, a molecular immunologist, and then I went back to school to be a physician assistant, so I'm kind of a technically oriented person. I talked to the guy at the dump a lot that was a selectman and I've been picking his brain over the past few years.
John Aruda?
Yes. He's an, he's an interesting guy. And he has kind of a similar background, cause he worked for pharmacies his whole life. But anyway, he thought that this might be a good fit for me and that is my motivation and I'm partially retired, so I have time. I only work on the weekends now.
So just John steering people from outside the board.
That's good. That's good. I need him on the ZVA to be working for the ZVA. I'll make him in good shape. I'm gonna tell him that.
And the procedure is that we can appoint you until March. Uh, no, we can't, we can, let me get this right. We can suggest to the selectmen to appoint you. Until March, we, cause we cannot go beyond election, so we can only appoint for whatever portion of this year is left. But, I speak for myself, but I would welcome a new board member and new alternate and come and see if we can learn, learn you something about planning, so. Motion?
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that ask the selectmen to.
Invite Joseph Vienna and Donna Hempel as a alternate and a full member of the planning board.
Planning board, right.
We meet the first Wednesday of every month. It'd be great to have more people because we've had a couple times in twenty twenty-four that we didn't have enough people to meet, so. So I guess the selectmen meet next.
Tuesday is second.
They'll, they meet Tuesday and then if you go to town hall, Mike Brooks can swear you in and you'll be all set for July.
Second motion. Right.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
And motion been made and seconded to welcome these new members. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I grab your number? I'll let you know. Can I just grab your phone number, let you know?
Six oh three, four, three, six, seven, and four, one, eight.
Donna, I see you a lot, but I think I'm. Six oh three? Yeah. Seven, three, three? Nine, one, two, eight. And that's a cell phone? Yep. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for being a people.
Number eight on our agenda is chairman's report and I really don't have anything to report. Number nine on the agenda is selectmen's report.
I don't have anything to report, however, we need a member from the planning board to sit on the CIP committee. Any takers? Any takers?
You're, you're supposed to sell it, you know, with the perks and stuff like that.
Demand it. Well, it's, wasn't me, it was the town, although I do support it. But town voted in a CIP committee, which needs a member from the BOS, the planning board, the ABC and two citizens, non-serving.
Members at large. Well, the, the CIP falls somewhere below the budget and master plan rewrite.
Unfortunately, I can't take this blow for you, so it has to be a different member.
You can't wear two hats?
I can.
Damn.
I would do it, but I'm not a member, so I don't think I qualify. But I'm interested in it.
I don't.
Can take an alternate?
Even as an alternate, I can't, I mean, we can discuss it at the next BOS meeting, but I don't see it being a problem if you want it.
Really?
Unless anybody else really wants it.
Well, I got this and I got, I'm involved with some other things.
Yeah.
Outside of this.
And I'm, I'm the wrong person for CIP because I'm the wrong person.
Otherwise, I'd do it, Adam.
And I'm gonna be gone for a while, so.
I'm gonna be gone tomorrow.
Yep.
Tia, if you're, if you're willing, I will
Okay.
make that recommendation. Thanks, Tia.
I'll do it, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Cool.
Kate?
Do it anyway.
Can you remind me? Thank you.
Correspondence and administration.
So that falls under the Pike Industries. So I sent them the letter. He actually came in today. Uh, one of representatives from Pike, Larry Major. And he asked, he, I don't think he understood. He wants to know, I said, well, the board feels that the ten thousand dollars is not sufficient. He wants to know, what do you want for a figure? I said, well, I'll meet him tonight and I'll ask them.
Hundred thousand dollars? He wants a figure.
A, a realistic maybe figure?
Probably realistic, you go about fifty grand.
Gonna cost more than ten to recover that site, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could say fifty or any other figure that you can substantiate.
Okay, fifty or higher.
I doubt it's a whole lot of difference in money between ten and fifty.
Right.
You have, you have experience in those bonds?
Not like that. Normally, a bond is, if, if we're doing something, the bond is for if you were building a school, the bond would be for the total amount of the school value.
Yeah.
And I bet, I've had experience in that before where we built a school, the contractor defaulted and we went to the back of the bonding company and got the required money in order to finish the, the job. And which was for the full amount and, and it, it worked out fine, so.
And this is for reclaiming the Pike site once they're gone?
Which they had the map, wrong, wrong map and line number, so we corrected that today.
And I don't remember off the top of my head, but how large is that area that would need to be reclaimed?
I don't know, off the top of my head either.
Are they still taking material out of there?
They take some. I don't think they take a whole lot.
Does some of it come from Coleman?
Some would come, and I think they truck stuff in. They'd sort of go for a particular aggregate. Some would come, and I think they truck stuff in, they'd sort of go for a particular aggregate, so.
I would say a fifty thousand dollar minimum is probably sufficient.
Okay. I'll report, I'll tell him that and then I'll report back to you guys next month, see what he says.
Okay. Any other correspondences?
No, I'm sorry, I was reading, no, no.
The next thing on the agenda is the Coleman pit update.
Can I add something before we do that?
Sure.
So at the last selectmen's meeting, Fort did present, um, and that's friends of the Osiphe Rail Trail. And I just figured that I would give you, um, a copy of what we presented so that you can also see it and be in the know if you didn't watch. One sec. So, there you go. That's all.
And is this just one complete thing?
Yeah, it was like a thirty minute presentation on what the DNCR is doing with the rail trail. And since it's a big portion, um, of land, like thirty-five acres, I think, but also about ten miles, so half, about half of the trail goes through Madison, that you would be aware of it and just see what's going on in the next few months and. And if you have any questions. That's all.
And they must have a website?
Yep, we have a website, um, we have a Facebook that I'm just getting going. And then the DNCR, you can go on the State Parks website for the DNCR meetings, that will be hopefully with a selectman rep, myself, um, and the other towns, so they are going to figure out what the highest and best use of the trail is for all of the public and each, uh, joining town.
Okay, thank you. And so the next on the agenda is the Coleman pit update, if any, and I have a clear conflict of interest. So I will leave.
Gee, that's a bit.
Number one?
Thank Mark.
Thank you.
And probably you want any members of the, is this non-public or?
Yes, we're going to non-public, so everything has to be, yeah. You, well, you and you guys are gonna have to leave too.
Do you, do you announce the, or you say?
Yeah, of course, no, um.
We'll have to make.
A motion.
Thank you.
No.
Yes. No?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Kate, you have to make a motion.
I'll see you before you leave, okay? Don't leave, don't.
Don't sprint out of here.
Yeah, no, go through that, I guess. I'm gonna call. Yes, please, alright, hold on, let me get to the.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
You can email.
Okay. Alright, so you've gotta read your little.
Thank you, nice meeting you. Bye.
So you're gonna read that.
Okay, next on the agenda.
Are we off, Amanda?
No, we need to be on.
Right, okay, that's great, sorry, sorry, my brain is like.
Entertain a motion to enter non-public session. All marks. Make a motion to enter into non-public session per RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, eleven, one.
For that reason.
Uh, to discuss issues on the Coleman gravel pit.
We gotta read this file right here. Why we're going into non-public?
RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, Roman numeral two. Consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel, either in writing or orally, to one or more members of the public body, even where legal counsel is not present, by a roll call vote.
Adam, aye.
Paul, aye.
Paul, aye.
Tia, aye.
Carl, aye.
So we have to make the motion, we have to make the motion.
He made the motion, he has to make the motion, I'll second it, and we've got the vote.
Perk, thank you.
Yep.